Town of Wappinger, in your Board of Appeals meeting for May ninth, 2023, to order. Can I have a roll call, please, B?
Mr. Delaporte?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, here.
Mr. Ward?
Here.
Mr. Ward, please.
Here. Acceptance of minutes from April twenty fifth, 2023.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Anybody against? No. Good. Okay. We're going to move on to the adjourned public hearing now. I just want to let everyone know, as you can see, there's only four of us sitting up here. So anybody who has a public hearing tonight that is looking for a vote can ask for an adjournment for two weeks because we don't have a full board. Unfortunately, the chairman had something happen and he couldn't make it tonight. So that's, I'm just letting you know, anybody here for an adjourn, for a public hearing, can have an adjournment of two weeks.
Or they can choose to vote.
Choose, choose to vote, choose to vote, as is.
They have the option.
Yes, you have the option.
Two, two plus two equals zero.
They have the option to go for the vote with the four of you, but keep in mind that at least three have to vote for your variance. Or if you would rather not take a chance with four, you can wait two more weeks till we have a full board. That's the option.
Right. So moving on, I'm going to start with the appeal number two, three, dash, seven, seven, eight, seven, an area variance, Christopher and Yasmin Slaughter, seeking an area variance section two forty thirty seven district regulation in an R twenty zoning district where no more than two accessory structures are permitted on a residential lot. The applicant has a total of four accessory structures, thus requesting a variance to allow gazebo shed, artist studio, and garage to remain. The playhouses to be removed. Property is located one eighty Woodman Road on fifty nine point three acres and is identified as tax grid number six, two, five, eight, dash, zero, one, dash, three, two, five, seven, two, eight, in the town of Wappingers. And I see you guys are up. How you doing?
Good.
Good to see you. I understand that the mailings weren't done?
No, no, the, the.
The published, the published?
The publication wasn't paid for.
We published it once, they published it again, and I forgot to pick it up today.
So we're going to have to adjourn two weeks, right?
Well, you have to open this meeting.
Can I have a motion to open a public meeting, please?
Make a motion to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, we're going to have to adjourn you out two weeks. Unfortunately, you have to follow through?
Yeah.
And we need that paperwork here.
Yeah, I, I realized that. I missed the two emails. I don't know how I missed them, and I just looked.
Any, any other problem we're having here is that the playhouse that's going to be removed, we would like to see that removed before you come back.
Yeah, we're in the predicament, the land is so wet there, we can't get the heavy machinery in. So we're only able to take the front off so far.
Right.
That's where we're at with that. So hopefully this week dries it out, we can start to rest this weekend. But it is, it's a, it's a mess.
So we need to verify before.
Well, it's going, it's getting very warm. We're going to eighty degrees, and you have two weeks. So when you get it down, call the office, we'll have an inspector go out so that we could verify it for the next meeting.
Perfect.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn this to our next meeting?
Since this is a public hearing, we want to show the license to the public.
Need, are, don't we just reopen the public hearing in a second?
No, but even today.
Just in case someone's here.
He's still up to ask the public.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf or against this matter for the slaughters right now? Okay. So we're going to adjourn it out to May twenty third, 2023?
And do you want to take my mailing stuff and the certifications and the, all the stuff?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Twenty third?
Twenty third, yes.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's adjourned. Next one, public hearing, appeal number two, three, seven, seven, nine, zero, area variance, Luis Gutierrez, seeking an area variance section two forty thirty seven district regulation in an HP zoning district where fifty feet of front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide nine feet for the construction of a covered landing with three steps, thus requesting a variance of forty one feet. Where fifty feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide twenty five feet for half-story pre-existing non-conforming house, thus requesting a variance to allow for a full second floor for bedrooms. Where thirty feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide ten feet, thus requesting a variance of twenty feet for the construction of a twelve by fourteen shed. The property is located seventeen fifteen Sergeant Palmetiere Way, um, zero point five acre acres and is identified as tax grid number six, one, five, seven, zero, two, five, six, two, eight, five, two, in the town of Wappingers. Mr. Gutierrez? Did you have a nice vacation?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Great day of vacation.
Good to see you back.
Thank you.
So make a motion, or have someone make a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Make a motion for public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can you just explain to us what you need really quickly? We all went out and saw the property, so if you just put it in your terms of what you would like.
My name is Luis Gutierrez, I am seven fifteen Sergeant Palmetiere Way, Wappinger Falls. I want to get more area in my house and I get variant for cover the three step in the front and make some porch and, and the, the left side, the property. And one addition in the here.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions for Mr. Gutierrez?
So my understanding is currently you have, you have a covered porch, right? And that cover, covered porch is going to be fully enclosed with a second story addition on top? And then a new covered porch is going to be pushed forward towards the street, correct?
Uh huh, yes.
Have you looked into any other configurations, you know, having an entryway on the side of the house, extending to the side or to the back, instead of extending towards the street?
No.
Is there nothing outside works?
This is the only configuration. It just covered this stair and enclosed the porch and, and the addition in the back.
The only reason we ask is because you're so close to the, the road, you know? Be nice for you if you didn't have to worry about the road right in front of your house like that.
Right. It is, it's not too close. It's a little close to the street, but not too close.
Anything else? Big variation you're asking, correct? Big, it's a big variation you are asking for, so if any other option, it'd be easier to get to discuss.
All right. I usually use the, the back entrance, right? And for, for the bar and the parking lot.
I mean, does anyone use that entryway?
What?
Yeah, well, when we were inside, we were just, you know, discussing, you know, it seems like there's not a sidewalk, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure who is coming up those steps towards the house, like, is there any, there's no option to have, like, an entryway on the side of the house?
On the side?
To come out in the direction of the driveway?
I got the, I got the plan already and the blueprint already. That's another configuration in my blueprint and that's giving me more cost for that.
So it's a financial burden to look into an alternate design?
He, he said it would be a financial burden if you altered that design.
Redesign that and put in the side of the house?
If you changed the design, it would be a financial burden because you already have plans. Right?
And put in the side, you say?
That's just what he said.
Just as an option, yeah, I mean, you're just looking at other ways where you could achieve what you want to achieve without increasing the variance.
Yeah, I, I get this idea from teens one time, but I lose the dining room if I put the entrance in one side, right in the middle of the house and get the entrance. It's more beautiful, looks more beautiful. I like it, but I miss some space inside the house.
Okay?
Yeah.
Anybody in the audience?
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk about either this Gutierrez variance tonight? So, Mr. Gutierrez, you still have the option to, we can go to a vote tonight, or you could adjourn it for two weeks. What would you like to do?
To wait or moving that from the side?
You can, you can move, you can do tonight, we can move forward with it tonight, or you can ask for the adjournment for two weeks.
Because we only have.
Because there's only the four of us.
Oh.
And if. Wait a second, excuse me, John. She's fluent in Spanish. Would it be helpful if she told you in Spanish what they're saying?
Si, ellos dicen que.
Thank you, yeah.
Should she put her name in the record?
Yeah, just put your name in the record for us.
Franca Patrillo, Houstonville, New York.
Ellos dicen que si yo lo muevo al lado, no tengo que esperar la dos semana para la aprobación. O si lo dejo así, tendría que esperar dos semanas volver aquí, ¿cierto?
Si, pero puedes moverlo a lo izquierdo, ¿es posible? Porque está muy cerca de calles.
Es posible, pero pierdo espacio dentro de la casa porque si muevo la entrada ahí, entonces perdería el dinerón en ese espacio justamente, ¿por qué?
No hay, no hay espacio.
No, eh.
Detrás de la casa.
Detrás de la casa, tengo una entrada ya por ahí, pero no quisiera moverlo ahí, solo mejor esperaría las dos semanas.
Entonces quieres esperar las dos semanas hasta que están todos y pueden decidir.
Si.
He wants to wait the two weeks for the whole one to be.
I, I will wait, and I will talk in this, middle of this time, I will talk with my architect for redesign something if I like me, eh, I will, I will take these two weeks for thinking about that thing.
That would be better. I think that would be a better chance, yes.
Would you also be able to submit to us a copy of the floor plan? That might help your argument.
I got it here.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be a.
It's good to see there's a reason why, you know, it can't go in.
Luis, do we have the floor plan in your building permit? You've submitted that.
Yes.
So we can get that for you.
Okay.
So you don't have to give us that one. B and me will get it to them during the week.
Yeah, you've got two copies.
I know, we have one, right? So we'll take care of that.
So do I just need a motion to adjourn the entire thing?
Yes.
As the, and the public hearing just stays open?
Yes, until the next meeting.
So can I have a motion, please, adjourn us for two weeks?
Make a motion to adjourn for two weeks?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
We stand next in two weeks from here?
Two weeks.
What day?
Two weeks, that's five, five twenty three.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Franca.
Thank you. Can we hire her?
No, but she's in the audience a lot, so now we know you're here.
I got the affidavit for, do you need it?
Just so you know, Franca speaks good, good Spanish, so even at the town board, she's always around to help us.
Okay, moving on, public hearing continues. Appeal number two, three, dash, seven, seven, eight, eight, an area variance, Brian and Kathy Holly, seeking an area variance section two forty, dash, thirty seven district regulations in R twenty zoning district.
Okay.
Where twenty feet to the side yard property line is required, the applicant can provide eight point six for the legalization of a three season room, thus requesting a variance of eleven point four. Where twenty feet to the side yard property line is required, the applicant can provide eight point six for the legalization of a covered screen deck. Where twenty feet to the side yard property line is required, the applicant can provide nine point four for the legalization of an open deck, thus requesting a variance of ten point six feet. The property is located at sixteen Applesauce Lane on zero point three five acres and is identified as tax grid number six, two, five, eight, dash, oh, four, dash, seven, zero, one, zero, zero, one, in the town of Wappingers. And we have Brian and Kathy Holly.
Yes.
Evening, guys, how are you tonight?
Good.
Um, you've heard everything that's been going on, right? We don't have beat. Okay, so I'm going to move to, we'd like to open the public hearing.
I make a motion to.
Second.
I just want to, I would just, on record, I know Brian and Kathy for last, for my old work, please, but I think I, my opinion will be independent to that effect.
All in favor?
Just for the record, you don't have any business dealings with them?
No, it was just work.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? How you guys doing?
Okay.
Good to see you tonight. Can you just tell us, give us a brief description of what you need and why you need it?
We're Brian and Kathy Holly, we live at sixteen Applesauce Lane. We are requesting an area variance for our existing three season room, screened in deck, and open deck.
Okay, well, we, obviously, we can look at the property, right?
Right, we, we visited the property. The, uh, the shed, you're going to move the shed from the back into your property?
Yes, that's.
I understand that it's, has not been moved.
Not yet.
Okay, is there some problem with bringing the shed in?
The shed was on a separate PO, I thought, the pool and shed, so we wanted to get past tonight, and then at, once we see what happens tonight, we have to hire someone to then do the heavy work. And that will be to move the shed where we showed you to the other side.
Okay.
So it's on a separate appeal?
A separate building permit.
Of a separate building permit because it didn't require an area variance depend, because we moved it to the Plan B.
So I believe you have a separate permit for the shed, the pool, the hot tub?
Yes.
Those were all items that didn't need a variance, and then they separated out to the things that needed a variance.
But still, I think having the, does affect what it is today. So I think we should consider that part effect before we make the cool, other decision or whatever. So somehow, if we are granting or something, certain condition for that, so we can push one.
Absolutely. So if we vote yes, we would condition that the shed be moved within a timeframe?
Okay. And then you'll give us a timeframe, or?
We would.
Well, they'll give you what, how long in the condition.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Somebody in the audience still want to?
No, I haven't moved up to that part yet. Does anyone else have any questions up here, on Holly's? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and talk about this, either for or against? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close here.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion to either approve or deny the variances which are?
They chose to go forward with the.
Yes.
The vote tonight?
You, you would like to go forward with the vote tonight, being that there's only four of us?
Because two, a two is a no. So you know.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. So we announced it when we opened tonight. That the fact that we don't have a full quorum, they could opt to either have the four vote or they could wait for two weeks.
Okay.
So can I have a motion to either grant or deny the variances?
I have one question before we make that motion. Do they have to be separate motions for each?
They're all attached?
Or?
It's kind of all the same.
Okay. All right, then I'll, I'll make a motion that we grant the variances. The requested variances will not change the, will not produce an undesirable change in neighborhood. There was no substantial detriment to nearby property since these are existing already. There is no feasible means available you, for you to achieve the benefit you seek. The variances are substantial, but the property is not. You're kind of hemmed in the way your house is configured. The variances will not have an adverse impact on, on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, and the alleged difficulty is self-created. So I would make a motion that we grant the variances with the condition. And the condition is, I'm sorry.
The shed be moved within two weeks? Is that what it was, within two weeks?
Two to three weeks.
Can that, can that be done, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's, that's a condition of your variances?
Okay.
Yeah, so two weeks, we have to put a date. Why don't you do by the end of the month?
End of the month?
March, May thirty first.
Yes. You have enough time.
Okay.
Okay, folks?
Once we do that, do we come back here then, or?
Okay.
Just got to get it done.
Just let you know, okay?
I think somebody from town should verify. Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'll second your motion. Can I have a roll call, please, B? Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so your variance has been granted, along with the condition, now you get your shed moved by the end of the month. Okay? Other than that, I think, is there paperwork for them, B, or?
Yeah, we'll consult the decision.
Okay.
Okay, folks?
All right, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Okay, appeal number twenty three, seven, seven, nine, three, area variance, Michelle Marie Heineman, seeking an area variance section two forty thirty seven, two forty, dash, twenty one F, one of district regulations in an R forty zoning district. Where only two accessory structures are permitted on a parcel, the applicant has six accessory structures, thus, thus requesting a variance to allow for the two sheds, one garage, two gazebos, three apartment structure to remain. Where fence can only be four feet height in, height in the front yard, the applicant is requesting to erect a six-foot fence, thus requesting a variance to allow a six-foot fence in the front yard. The property is located at eleven oh nine, one, 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 Route three seventy six, on a total of twenty five point two acres and is identified as tax grid number six, three, five, eight, zero, one, two, zero, five, six, seven, zero, and six, three, five, dash, zero, one, two, one, nine, seven, four, zero, in the town of Wappingers. And hello, how are you tonight?
Good evening, Sarah Ryan, Vandal Water and Vandal Water, on behalf of the applicant, Michelle Marie Heineman. Bear with me, I'm sweating a cold and allergies at the same time, so.
Open public? Okay. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Make a motion open?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we all went out to the property last Saturday. We noticed that there's more than six structures. We came up with seven.
May I ask the board what the additional structure is?
There's an additional garage we were unaware of. It's, it's away from, from what they've explained and what me and my department found on G I S.
Do you want to show me on the map?
Yeah.
If you come up and show me on the map.
Yeah, I actually have.
And on my map, I actually highlighted.
Yes.
I put little numbers.
Additional surveys where you can pull it all with the.
So the shed, garage, gazebo, garage, garage, two, gazebo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you were missing this one on here? It looks like it was two sheds that were actually kind of combined into one structure. It was a little bit ambiguous. Yeah.
Four. Five. Six. What does that say?
We think it's a cabana.
Well, no, the one that was kind was a shed, the shed by the.
We had pictures of the cabana.
Yeah.
It was, I, I believe it was one of the sheds, right?
So the one they didn't highlight.
I was on a shadow, it was that, this guy.
No, that was a double.
There was a three car garage, but then there was that single garage up the hill.
That was that guy.
Two, three, four.
This guy. Yes, that shed.
Yeah. Should be this structure.
Three family house.
That's one that's not.
That's the pool cabana.
Yeah, but that's not highlighted. The, the pool cabana is in the board.
No, no, I know.
Cabana here and this cabana here, and then there's that garage that's right here.
It's a gazebo.
The cabana's over here, this is one of the, it's the house, right, because the house is right there.
Right.
If the banner was.
Doesn't even need to.
Anyway, that being said. Is two weeks going to be enough time, or?
Yes, you can definitely republish in the two weeks, B will put it in the paper today. This week.
And I will, I will try to get plans for that additional structure as well.
Okay.
Need to renotice the, for the additional structure.
Yeah, I would remail.
I want to talk about the site, and we put it on the back. It's curious.
Ask one?
While I'm here, I also wanted to hand over. This is not the type of defensive D I have to have it online, but it is the material that is.
When we were on site, we did notice that the, the wooded area in the back had been substantially, it appeared to be graded and cleared of all underbrush. Do you know what's happening back there?
Uh, I do not, I know there's a plant or.
So, well.
Well, that, that's not where the pool would have been.
The issue is, we stopped work a few months ago, and Mrs. Heineman said she didn't want it cleared, she wanted a few choice trees taken down. And I said, if you decide to do more, you need a grading permit. And she came in last week before she left for Europe, and I said, I'm hearing that they are grading, and she said she'd look into it. My deputy went out, and they've been out, and it's pretty clear cutted, and there has been a lot of grading. She's going to need to open a grading permit, which is kind of after the fact.
I will confer with the client and find out what's going on.
Do you want to do a fence, or? No, I think we can just do it all at the same time, correct? So can I have a motion to adjourn this one here?
So where's the two accessories?
Mr. Talk, right?
Structure.
Oh, here, I have, I have an additional.
Think it would be at the same time, or not?
For what? No more than two? It's in two forty thirty seven.
So these fences, were these fences supposed to move?
Everywhere.
Everywhere. So one side had the black fence, and they're going to put white.
Every, that, that white fence is everywhere else on the property line.
Okay.
No, we're asking.
Yes, yeah, that, I believe, is the plan.
Yeah, so the full perimeter.
The work is proposed to be done in stages. This was the information I was getting.
There was already some white fence up in the back that we saw.
Yes, they, they received a stop work permit.
Okay.
And.
And this is the same fence that you're showing us right now, correct?
Correct.
And that wants to be continued to end up closing?
Correct, the idea is to have a privacy fence surrounding the entirety of property.
Okay.
So I'm a little bit unclear about that. Barb, do you have a question before we go on about this fence? Are we good? Jim, are you good?
No, I don't have a question.
So we've looked at, I mean, she has a lot of property.
Yeah.
And the only area that she cannot, without a variance, have the six-foot is along the road front, what would be the front yard on Dogwood and on 376, where she wants to continue it. She's free to continue the six-foot up the side and around the back, which is acres and acres through what was woods.
Yes.
Okay, so my question, I'm sorry, Barb. I thought the last time you were here, I could be wrong. You said that the reason you wanted the fence up was because people were walking their dogs on the property. So I perceive that as a, basically not a privacy issue, but an issue that you don't want people venturing onto the property with their dogs.
To increase her privacy from people who would enter, correct?
I mean, I think the question we're going to ask is to ourselves when we decide upon this is, does a four-foot fence accomplish that?
I mean, it would be mismatched with the other fencing that is proposed to be up. I mean, the four-foot limit on fencing in the code is, the stated purpose is to protect sightlines, and none of these areas that the six-foot fence would be up would be protecting any sightlines. It's all along a roadway or at the end of a cul-de-sac.
Okay, but in addition, it would also, beside the sightline, it would also prevent people from walking onto the property. I mean, privacy is one thing, there's nothing back there to see, except woods. I mean, you're trying to keep people out, was my understanding.
Correct.
Not prevent them from looking in.
I mean, I think it's a little bit of both. I think she gets, you know, some lucky moves, apparently, that's what I've been told, the reasoning for the fences. Yes. It's privacy and to prevent people from coming on the property.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good. Everybody else good?
Sure. Barbara, can we adjourn this out?
Looks like Jim still has questions.
So can I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing? One more minute, okay.
So, we just have one, the notification. So the area variance is actually two, it's not 240-37, it is 240-30 subdivision B. So, we're going to have to amend.
Just change that in your legal notice, Sarah, and we'll change it.
Okay, I believe that is what we applied for.
Right. It's just.
Yeah, you do, you have it right, so your legal notice.
Needs to be perfect.
Right.
So it's out of 240-30, it's got to be 240?
No, instead of -37 that's printed, it's going to be 240-30, capital B.
Correct.
No. No, depends where you submit from. Technically, they all are in the, most of them are in the file from the Dogwood side, but the property is kind of. I wasn't worried about that. I mean, before this, she gets the variance, it's just so technical here, you know, I just didn't worry about it.
Okay.
We agreed to have a, I could come, be honest, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, we're done.
No, you're welcome. Can I please have a motion to?
Oh.
Can you?
Audience.
Oh, is there anyone in the audience who would like to talk about this, at this point? So can I please have a motion to adjourn the public meeting for two weeks?
Make motion to adjourn for two weeks? I'm sorry? March 23rd?
May.
Of May 23rd.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, sorry about that.
Sarah, just let me know about the grading situation, we can chat.
Okay, discussion. Appeal number 23-7791, an area variance. Cesar R. Barzalo, seeking an area variance of section 240-37 district regulations in an R20 zoning district. Where fences in the front yard can have a maximum height of four feet, the applicant is requesting a height of six feet along two streets, thus requesting a variance to allow a six-foot fence along Roberts Road and Spook Hill Road. The property is located at 15 Spook Hill Road, on 1.03 acres, and is identified as tax grid number 6257-01-003924, in the town of Wapengers. And I believe we'll put this on for further discussion, right? More discussion. Good evening, how are you tonight?
Question if the fence was on top of the, you know, the hill or not.
Over the berm?
We were going to go look at the berm. Hi, can I have your name and what you're here for tonight?
Sure, my name is Edwin, I'm here representing 15 Spook Hill. And like it was mentioned, there's an existing fence that we put up, six-feet wooden dog ear fence on Spook Hill, on the, I guess, anterior side on the right. We want to keep that six-foot fence that's there, and then along Spook Hill, we want to do an open vinyl-type fencing, that's open panel, so you can kind of see through, up until the, pretty much the end of where the house is going to be finished. And then we want to do, on Roberts Road, all wooden, same fence that's already up there.
When we were out to see the site last Saturday, we all believed that you don't need a six-foot fence. What you had mentioned to us was that you were looking to keep people off the property.
Correct.
So you don't feel a six-foot fence is needed. And plus, it's going to like destroy the neighborhood, I mean, if you look around your house, there's absolutely no fences there at all. So we're just saying that a six-foot fence is not, it's just going to look totally out of place. Like the one that you already erected, it looks out of place. I have to be honest with you, that's, you know, I believe I'm speaking for the board. If I'm not, please correct me, but.
That's what my feeling, what I agree with you, and having that big bump in front, you know, added extra security anyway. So I think.
Well, it looks like the property was probably raised off of, right off of Spook Hill there, or just it's a natural contour. Can't really tell. We don't know if you, you know, built up the berm higher or not. It looks like it might have been, I don't know. I'm just saying. It might be just natural contour, but on top of that, I just don't feel that there's a need for a six-foot fence there, so.
I myself didn't think that it was built up. I think that's been like that, the way I saw the rock, all the rock that was there, I don't think that.
So the berm is new, and I've asked you to amend your grading permit, and you still have not submitted new plans. So we really need to get on that.
So I just, just a point of clarification on two things. One, in terms of there not being fencing of six-foot in the neighborhood, I mean, the neighbor next door has a six-foot fence right in the front, vinyl. So it does exist in the area. Two, I, in terms of the berm, I am trying to understand how the fence is mixed in with the driveway berm, because they're not on the same thing. I think, David, you went in there and you looked in the back, and you took a picture, and you could see from the interior and from the exterior side, they're not on the same plane. I mean, unfortunately, the property is.
I think our question is, you know, the desire for privacy and security, you know, we're asking if that can be achieved with a four-foot fence as opposed to a six-foot fence. And I think a lot of us are thinking that with the raised elevation, the berm, the plantings, a four-foot fence gives you more coverage than the majority of properties have, just because of your elevation.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I just think that, you know, since, at least that corner where we put, I mean, if that also needs to be taken down, that needs to be taken down, that's, you know, your decision, but from our perspective, you know, that area, we want a garden to be in the back there and not be so visible, which is why we kind of restarted that area. The rest, I mean, that's obviously what the vision is, but if it's not, then if four-foot is the decision, then I can't challenge that, but I'm just portraying what the vision is of the property. And yeah, I mean, that's.
I mean, we're not voting today, right? Because this is a public hearing. But I think you've heard individually what people are thinking, which probably gives you an idea of how it would potentially go.
We are on for discussion tonight. You still have a right to come back for your public hearing, two weeks. We're just saying if you can, maybe, we're, you know, we're trying to give you how we feel.
Sure.
You know, I'm, we're not telling you yes or no right now, we're just telling you how we feel.
Yeah.
So.
So just to, so I understand the general tone, so do you feel then as though like the existing six-foot fence that's there should probably, do you think the same, I guess, to your, in your terms? So a four-foot fence would be sufficient to cover, I guess, the garden in that area as well, is that the general message?
I think you could make that argument, that you want the higher fence around the flat portion of the site where you have a garden, and everywhere else you would have a lower four-foot fence or plantings.
Okay.
You could make that argument.
Okay, no, just throwing it out there.
You're going to have the arbor body there also?
So that's why we put those pine trees on the front, or not, yeah, the pine trees in the front of that fence, the four. But we felt as though then it's going to, it doesn't really cover it too well, I mean, it's nice aesthetically, but we just wanted to really be sure that that area, I guess. I don't know if the arbor body, maybe he could do arbor body there as well and remove the fence, but I think that he wanted a fence at least there.
Did you have anything else, Barb, that you wanted?
So, well, I wanted you to finish, so before you come back for your public hearing, I would like you to bring us in a new survey that shows where that wall, very beautiful as it is, but you brought out to the road, and if the berm is totally on your property, or if it has now come on to the town property. And the other thing is, behind your house, it's very steep, down to your next neighbor. And there's, unless you've cleaned it up, there's a lot of stuff that's been tossed back there behind a fence and off the wall. So just clean that up for me, because it's, even though it's on your property, you're so high and that neighbor is just looking at.
Okay.
Do that before your public hearing, and get me the new survey that shows where this berm is currently on that wall.
So we'll put this on for two weeks.
Is two weeks enough for getting a survey?
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Well, I've asked him now, it's a couple of weeks, so.
Why don't you put it out a month?
Did Brian already speak with you, or no?
Not at all.
No, okay.
So. Has Brian been working on this for you?
Yes, he's only, I mean, the survey is completed, that portion's already done.
So he just has to put the berm and the wall on the survey?
Whatever, he needs to communicate that with you, but the survey portion, I already took care of that.
Right, we have that, so have Brian call my office, and we can get something for the next meeting, if you want.
I think two weeks is fine, I can, I can meet him later this week.
Looks like you are already in two.
Barbara, would a month be better?
It's up to him, if he, for me, I just need the survey with these items on it. If he can get, just remember though, if you come on May 23rd and you don't have these items, then you're going to have to do it again and do. So do you want to do it in two weeks, or do you think you need the extra couple of weeks for safety?
Do I have to make that decision now?
Yes, true.
The meeting would be June 13th instead of May 23rd. It would give you additional two weeks.
I mean, I guess to be on the safe side, I guess put it June 13th, just so I don't come a third or a fourth time, I guess.
Fine, we'll put it out for June 13th.
Yes.
There'll be seven coffee again. And you've heard what you, you know, are requested, so please bring those paperwork with you, or have it filed by then. And we'll see you then, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
So it's June 13th?
June 13th. Okay, moving on, discussion. Appeal number 23-7792, area variance. Brian Reguzzi, seeking an area variance section 230, 240-37, district regulation in R40 zoning district. Where 25 feet to the side-left property line is required, the applicant can provide 6.5 feet for the legalization of a 12-by-14 wood shed, thus requesting a variance of 18.5 feet. The property is located at 9 Larissa Lane, on 1.1 acres, and is identified as tax grid number 635803246464, in the town of Wapengers. And hi, Brian, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Brian and I know each other, we, our kids played football and cheerleading.
Cheerleading, yeah.
They did both together, so.
Well, you have my sympathies. Thank you.
So we do know each other.
Yes.
How you doing?
Good, good.
Why don't you tell us who you are and what you need, please?
Okay, my name is Brian Reguzzi, I live at 9 Larissa Lane in Wapinger Falls. Basically, I recently replaced shed in my, basically at the top of my driveway, where I had an existing shed that's been there for 20 years. And then I found out that it needs to be, you know, moved further from my neighbor's property. But it's basically in the same exact spot as the other shed was. I don't know, you know, exactly where else I could move it on the property, it could also always go in the back, but basically that's why I'm here.
You're talking about two different sheds?
Excuse me?
Did you say two different sheds or same one shed?
Wait, it's one shed, one shed, yes, yes.
I believe what he said was he had his old shed replaced with a new shed.
Yes, yes.
Is that, is that what I understood?
The old one was falling apart and took it down and got a new shed.
When was done that, when was it?
This was.
Maybe six months ago, five months?
Yeah.
So the survey we have, I think it's missing the middle band where the shed exists. But it's at the top of the driveway.
Top of the driveway, yeah.
So it's.
It's not on there?
Well, you know, it's, you know, it's, I think it's somewhere in that middle, you know, I think we're missing a chunk of this. You think it kind of lines up like this, you found these lines, so I assume it's.
The driveway, it's basically.
Okay, okay, so it's down a little.
Yes.
It's just not on the survey. It's just not listed on the survey.
So this is not like this? I know I have.
The lines don't line up, right? I think, I think it should be like, you know, if you trace out the lines, you're missing like.
So it didn't match the lines.
Yeah.
Yep. Can you get that picture, because more important to see this here, right?
Right, okay.
And this is the fine distance everything you can see, but.
Okay.
The critical part.
Well, the thing we always see is that, you know, if it's not surveyed, you know, it might be ambiguous where your property line is. So if we give it to you, then you go to sell, you might be back here because you're off by a foot or something ridiculous, right? So it's typically in your best interest to have another survey and have it as precise as humanly possible.
Maybe I have another appeal somewhere.
Okay.
I definitely remember seeing it somewhere, but.
Okay. So normally what we do now, Brian, is we come out and see the site. Come out and visit normally on a Saturday morning. This would be Saturday, May 20th, because we'd be jerving this out to Tuesday, May 23rd, right?
Okay.
Not a jerving, just.
Oh, well, we put it out for a public hearing, I apologize, on Tuesday, May 23rd.
Okay.
So we've come out on the 20th, probably 9:00 a.m. Just, do we need the property line marked, do you guys like the property line marked?
Thank you.
Running on the other side of the.
Yes.
If you could just mark the property line, a string, a rope.
Okay.
Chalk.
A stake or two.
Sure.
Something like that, just so we can see where the property line is.
Okay.
In, you know, relationship to the shed.
I mean, the six and a half feet is accurate, right?
Uh, yes, yes. I remember, I think it was Dan, Dan Franks, is the one that came out and looked at it, so.
He came out, he's from the town, and he came out, and he did a measurement?
Um, he's the one that told me that it was off by that amount of feet. Um, he's the one that told me that it was off by that amount of feet, so I'm assuming that he did measure it.
Okay, you, you're gonna publish inside mailings, and then if you, you know, get a revised survey and it's a discrepancy, you would have to pay to do all that again?
Okay. Wow.
So if you can measure it before we give, this is of your, your interest.
So basically get, try to get the shed put on a new survey.
What you want to do, I think Dave is saying, is if you have a property line and you have a shed, you want to make sure that you're saying, like the application states, it's six and a half feet.
Okay, all right, I got you.
Because if it's not.
Maybe a little more.
More is okay.
More, more is good.
Right, right, right.
Less is a problem.
Okay, all right.
You know, i- if you're confident, you know, that it's at least six and a half.
Yes, yes. It definitely is at least six and a half, yeah.
So like I said, Brian, if you'd be able to just mark like the property line for us.
Okay.
On the left side of that shed, it doesn't have to be the entire property line.
Right, right.
Couple markers there so we can see.
Okay.
Any relationship to where the shed is.
I mean, I'll be, do I need to be there? I will be there, but.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll come out on Saturday, probably 9 o'clock.
Sounds good.
And then we'll see you the following Tuesday for your public hearing, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, just so you know, if you're not sure after you go home, Spencer Hall, since this is not an old survey, a lot of times you can have them come out and just resurvey the line, not do a whole new survey.
Oh, okay.
So you could ask him to just do that line.
Who was it again, you're saying?
Your survey.
Oh, the guy, okay.
By Spencer Hall. I looked to see who it was, because it was an old survey. Sometimes they're not in business anymore.
Yes, right.
So this is not an old survey, so you.
It doesn't show the.
No, so the shed's not on it, so.
Right.
If you weren't sure after you go home and re-measure.
Okay.
My survey says.
No, that's a different guy, I'm up to somebody else.
Barger?
They, they can come out and just do the line for you.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Barb.
Yes.
Our survey says Barger the week.
Oh, I'm on someone else, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's Dick Ward.
I was moving ahead. I apologize, he will not be doing your survey, but somebody else could.
Okay.
But keep in mind, on, this is his survey, I'm moving along, you have 32 feet, I think it's 32.4, from your house to your property line, so a good way to measure is you can measure from your house.
From the house.
To the shed.
Okay.
However wide the shed is, then you know how much you have left.
Is there a poster rail fence still there?
Uh, yeah, that's my neighbor's, but yeah, it's, I mean, it's half there, half missing.
Pretty close to the property line.
Yeah, yeah, that's still there.
So I'm just saying, if he measures from the corner of the house to the shed, to the shed.
Right.
And then however wide the shed is, then you know what the difference is.
Perfect, okay. All right.
So the, the survey shows a poster rail fence on the property line?
Right.
So.
But this is what yours is.
No, I just asked them if it's still there.
Can we use that as a public?
Yeah, I mean, you can use that.
We can also do what I just said.
No, I'm saying, but.
How about I use whatever gives me more room?
The bottom, the bottom line is that even though he measures from the house to the shed and then adds the width of the shed, if he has less property on the other side of the shed.
Well, then he knows his number's wrong, or he has maybe eight feet, you know, he'll, that's a way to measure, because the house, the survey clearly states from the corner of the house.
To the property.
To the property line, he has 32.4 feet.
So you can go back.
It should at least confirm your measurement.
Right, right. Okay.
And just confirm it within the next day or so, so B will wait until, say, Thursday morning, because then she has to put this in the paper.
Okay. All right.
So you don't want to have to republish.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about this, Barb.
Take care.
We'll see you, uh, from Saturday, all right?
He's not coming back.
9:30, do you, do you give it in time?
I'm sorry.
Thanks, Barb, for clearing up the math.
What time do you have going to see?
Peel number 23-7794, area variance, Enrique and Erica Penafio, seeking an area variance section 240-37, district regulation, R40 zoning district, where 25 feet to the side yard property line is required, the applicant can provide seven feet for the installation of an 18-foot above-ground pool, thus requesting a variance of 18 feet. The property is located at 96 Robinson Lane and is identified as tax grid number 6459-03-058412 in the town of Woffengers. Hi, folks, how are you? Can I please have a name?
Yes, my name is Erica and he's Enrique Penafio.
Okay, and what are you guys seeking?
96 Robinson Lane, I'm sorry.
Please tell us what you're seeking, what, what you would like.
Okay, so we would like to install the 18 above-ground pool in the right side of our house. We have a 16 pool already there, it's 15 feet round, and we just found that out that that pool is in the line of the property. So that's why we need to take that one down, and we would like to install a new one, because that one is old, by the way. So we need a new one. And like I said, that is the only spot when we, we can locate the pool. In the beginning, we tried to locate it in the back of the house, but we just realized that the septic is there. So it's no other place really where to locate the pool. So that would be really close to our deck, because we have a deck already there, so the pool would be close to the deck.
So you're kind of between the deck and the property line, kind of aligned with the deck?
Yes, mhm.
Kind of looking at your property.
Yeah, because you see it's really narrow, so it's really hard to, you know, try to figure it out, yes.
High-shaped lot.
Yeah, it's, it's really weird, yep, mhm.
Just a little under a half acre, right?
Yes.
What is the temporary tent structure?
No, we don't have any temporary tent, that was removed when we bought the house.
Okay.
So, yes, I'm still there, I mean, it's still in the records, but it's not there.
Okay.
They removed before we moved in.
Okay, so the, the crushed stone driveway going to a, a tent on the neighbor's property is all?
No, it's gone, it's not there.
Okay, and the six, 16-foot pool is on the line, you said it's already there?
The 15 feet, yes, is on the line, yes.
Okay, and you're gonna take that one down and.
Yeah, we're gonna take that one down.
Put up an 18.
We're gonna put an 18, yes.
Seven and a half.
Seven feet.
Seven feet from the property line.
Seven feet, yes.
Seven feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So normally what we do is we like to come out and take a look, okay? We would be out there on Saturday, May 20th, probably around 9:20, 9:30, somewhere in around there, because you have the first one.
Okay.
And then we'll come see you guys.
Okay.
If you could maybe just mark out where you're gonna put your new pool, just, uh, uh, orange paint, something like that, you know.
Sure.
Kind of, kind of where the new pool's gonna be.
Okay.
Just so we can get an idea of what you want to do.
Mhm, sounds perfect.
Okay? Anything other, else?
But the day that you are going there, you would like to see the other, the old pool down. It doesn't matter if it's there.
You didn't have to take it out yet.
Oh, okay.
Like, just wanted to see the property line.
Okay.
And the new pool where you're going to put.
Okay.
Those two are important.
Because the thing is that the old pool is gonna be in the way for the new one.
That's all right.
That's what I'm saying.
Understood that the new one might, that the old one might be in the way? You can just do a, a partial circle.
Okay, sounds.
Of where the new one's gonna be, it doesn't have to be a complete.
Okay.
Doesn't have to show the total.
Let the band die over it.
Okay, so we'll be out there, and then we'll schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, May 23rd, at 7:00.
Okay.
So you'll come back here, and then we'll have further discussions and vote on it that night, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
I think B has some homework for you.
Okay.
And then we'll see you on Saturday, okay?
All right, thank you so much.
And we from Saturday.
Goodness.
On that Saturday. Thank you very much. How am I doing there, Thomas?
Great. Need a break?
Appeal number 23-7795, area variance, Jay and Dana Van Benskoden, seeking an area variance section 240-37, district regulations and an R40 zoning district, where 50 feet to the rear property line is required, the applicant can provide 10 feet for the legalization of a shed with an overhang, thus requesting a variance of 40 feet. The property is located at 92 Hackensack Highway Road on 2.2 acres and is identified as tax grid number 6259-02-7325009 in the town of Woffengers. And hello.
Hi.
I will take it, Jay and Dana, right?
Yes.
Please just tell us who you are and what you need.
All right, we're Jay and Dana Van Benskoden, Van, Van Benskoden residing at 92 Hackensack Heights. We purchased a property with an existing 12-by-16 shed with a 10-by-16 overhang on it that sits 10 feet from the property line.
Okay, this is the shed?
Yes.
Okay. So you say you purchased the property with the shed on there?
Yes.
Okay.
How did you find out that your shed wasn't?
Somebody drove around.
Yeah, someone came through our old neighborhood and just.
From the town and gave us something.
Inspector.
Yeah.
Okay. You weren't doing anything else to the property, just to be a drive-by type situation?
Right.
Would you know how old the shed is?
The shed?
Yeah.
At least 20 years.
The shed's in otherwise good condition, you're now looking to replace it any time soon?
No.
And it's unmovable?
Not really, I mean, it's, B, I'd rather knock it down before I move it, because I don't know if I can go to move it, but I'm knocking it down, so.
Understood. And the overhang, it looks like maybe you just have some wood stored under there and do a little.
It's just a, it's a big woodshed and some things.
Okay, so I'm sure, I'm sure you've been sitting there listening, and I'm sure you heard me tell the other people that we will come out and do a site visit on Saturday, May 20th. We'll probably be at your house around 9:45, 9:50, somewhere in around there. I don't think we need, do you think we need to have any, mark anything?
Since, since they are requesting a certain footage.
Right.
Probably yes.
So if you could just like mark the property line?
And, and you're confident on the dimension, obviously?
Yes, we have a survey, we know exactly where it is.
Right, just so we can see exactly where the property line is.
I'm gonna go to the line on the side where it is.
And, uh, so we'll be out around, probably like I said, around 9:45, 9:50 Saturday morning, depending on traffic in Woffengers, you know, it can always be a little bad.
No.
And then we'll schedule your public hearing for Tuesday, May 23rd at 7:00. And we'll go from there, okay?
Before you leave, just, you came in to also legalize the pool? Or is the pool new?
Yeah, legalized the pool, we had a permit for that.
Okay, so just for the board, because this is really behind his property, and it sounds like we could see all the way in the back, there were other issues that they were also legalizing, if they're just not part of this application, because a variance wasn't necessary.
Okay.
So it was the pool probably that started this and then.
Okay, yeah, because I see electrical inspection and.
Right, so I just, because it's so far away, it would look like, how would we know? But this also backs up to Airport Drive, too, so it could be.
These guys got a variance.
Right, this is candling.
Yeah.
This is need. So I just, for the record, that we didn't just go find the shed back in the woods, that there were other issues.
Thank you, Barb.
Good.
So you didn't find his, no, whoopsie. So then we'll be out on Saturday to see you, and then you come back, and you'll come back on our following Tuesday, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Okay.
It has to be out in front of the house, right?
Appeal number 22-7772, area variance, Alpine Commons, multifamily workforce housing, seeking an area variance section 240-37, 240-81.7, district regulations and SC zoning district, where maximum of 93 dwelling units is allowed, the applicant is proposing 144 dwelling units, thus requesting a variance for an increase in the density for mixed uses and allow 51 additional dwelling units. We're struck, where 2.5 stories or 35 feet maximum building height is allowed, the applicant is requesting an increase to 3.5 stories per 50 feet building height, thus requesting a variance of one story and or 15 feet building height. Where 282 parking spaces is required for 144 dwelling units, the applicant is requesting a decrease in required parking places to 238 parking spaces, thus requesting a variance of 44 less parking spaces. The property is located at 1404 Route 9 and is identified as tax grid number 6157-02-707773 in the town of Woffengers, lead agency as of January 21st, 2023. Good evening.
Good evening, acting chair, members of the board, my name is Neil Alexander, I'm a partner at the law firm of Kentucky Fader, on, tonight here on behalf of the applicant. To my far left is Steve from Thriven, who's our architect, and you, you probably received a bunch of his materials, some of which you, we went over when we were last here in March, and also in a supplemental submission. Closer to me is Brian Donato, Brendan Lloyd, and Charlotte Abadear.
Abadear.
Abadear, thank you, all from Dakota Partners here tonight, who helped to contribute, create the package that was submitted to you on April 11th. I mean, I think it was a lengthy recitation on the agenda of the variant, variances we, we need, I think the last meeting, we had spent quite a bit of time going over the height and, and stories variances and with that submission, and where, our sense of where and where our sense of where we left off at the end of the meeting, which led to the April submission, was, you know, wanting to get a little bit better understanding about the density of the project with 144 units, the area essentially where the project's site will occur within the fact that it's a mixed-use project overall. And the submissions start getting into some of that, so what you... That's not supposed to be... That's super rude. So I... Is there a way for me to actually go to our submission package? While you're doing that, I'll just keep going. Thank you. So what you'll see in that package, and we can go through in more detail, but I just wanted to give a quick preview, is a lot of examples throughout New England of Dakota's multifamily projects of the similar nature, scale, and intensity. And then also through using CoStar data, we were able to drill down on all those projects that you had identified to show that our density is either lesser, you know, is lesser and in some cases significantly lesser, even within our project's site area as opposed to the 86 acres overall of the site. And clearly, obviously, of a different type of vintage, where most of the multifamily workforce housing that was built in the town, you know, is close to 50 years old, if not older at this point. And then some of the additional things you'll notice in there is we already have our CHCO sign-off. There was a request to see the package that we submitted to DHCR, Department of Housing and Community Renewal. That's absolutely perfect. And a lot of the other materials you had asked for. So at this point, I think what we'll do is Steve will come up and just from Thriven Architect and sort of start here, which is the overall site on the 86 acres, and then obviously here on the far right, and start talking about the various attributes and working his way through. Do you want me to hand these out to him?
This has to be his signature package already, but I think it's much bigger.
We saw that one. We saw this version of it.
Thank you.
This is a...
Thank you.
We usually forgotten all the year.
For the last section. But, you know, I think this is useful. There it is. Good. A future plan, I assume.
That's all right. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Steve Schock. I'm the principal architect with Thriven Design. We're located in New Jersey, and we do quite a bit of this residential work with Dakota as well as other developers with multifamily housing. We were also part of the, I guess, a little over a year ago, part of the design charret process with the town council and the city's or the town's planner to look at other strategies for revitalizing Alpine Commons beyond just this site. But one of the things I wanted to clarify a little bit is build off of some of the conversation from last discussion where there was, I guess, instead of piecing together multiple maps to understand where the site is, this exhibit that you have here, I wanted to be able to show clearly, you know, what part of Alpine Commons we're really looking at for housing. And that would be the area that's currently colored in yellow on the... It's the parcel mapping on the left. And I think that is part of the key aspect of this is when you look at that aerial photograph and what you're seeing here as well is the overlay of the flood zones and wetlands areas and things like that. You can see that most of the parcel to the north of the developed shopping center is really unbuildable. It's all compromised. It's all considered either steep or wetlands area. So there's a fair amount of acreage in that area. There's that little tip that kind of comes down to Route 9 that is not part of the proposed residential for Dakota. And then you've got this area kind of to the south. I don't want to be redundant with other things that have been spoken about here before, like the line of sight and things of that nature. But regarding this piece here, that this area of the tract that's in yellow, it has a challenging and unique topography. It has a challenging and unique geometry, as you can see, kind of wedge shape. What you see on the left side of the page, that's pretty much the circulation path for the proposed housing. There is one location, pretty much one location where we can get onto this site. You can see that. That's the red arrow over there. It's pretty much right down the travel lane that defines the difference between that parking area that's closest to the BJ's and kind of the more remote service lot. That's a lot of parking area that doesn't get used at all. But there is a travel lane that comes down through there, and there was actually a cut and a service bed for a roadway that goes into the site. So that's the location for accessing into this. And as you can see, what happens is as soon as you get in, there are some grading and wetlands and topographical challenges, so you pretty much have to split as soon as you get in there. So you have a portion of the residential that is really to the east and a portion of it is to the west. And we have the community building position kind of right at that split, so there's kind of a gateway element to the residential design. So some of the things that I understand, we were speaking about it the last time, had to do with whether or not there was viable commercial use to this land. And part of the issue really comes to understanding that this site's circulation of basically two smaller areas is pretty much the only way you can use this land. This land is really typically in an SC zone, a shopping center zone. What you want to do is create large, flat areas. Large, flat areas for big either pad sites or anchor retailers like the BJ's or the AC Moore and a lot of parking right in front. It's destination vehicular oriented shopping. That's typically what you have in an SC zone. Now, part of what we had talked about with, in the previous text amendment that had been proposed was to try to soften some of the SC criteria so that we could introduce smaller retail and some mixed residential in and around the existing, in and around the existing, what used to be the AC Moore part of the site. What you have over here is pretty much just the ability to create some road network and relatively small footprint buildings. Not large footprint buildings that would be conducive to destination retail. So that's pretty much why this part of the site has always been envisioned as more of a workforce housing to help support, yes, the town, but also support the retailers, ideally to create kind of a live-work type of community at the Alpine Commons site. So that addresses, I think, some of, I think, some of the conversation that I'm aware of from our last time, just to give you a little bit of background on that. These residential buildings are typically no more than 60 feet in depth. And, you know, the kinds of retailers that are typically drawn to a destination retail center like Alpine Commons, typically you need 100 foot, 200 foot plus in terms of your depths and things like that. Plus, as you can kind of see from the layout, even if we were able to be able to do that, we can't do it all in one level. The residential buildings give you the ability to manipulate the floor lines, the floor levels, and have buildings step up and down, which is really not conducive to large, open retail. So that's some of the things that we were going through the design team's mind as well as the planning team when we were looking at the prior text amendments to be able to have a concentration of workforce housing on this site and to the extent that we could create a live-work and retail type community, do that through the introduction of text that would have allowed for things like residential over top of retail on the more dedicated center of the site. So I want to stop there for a second because this is kind of a discussion and see if there's any questions or other dialogue that you want to have over that aspect of things.
I mean, I think I do have a question asked to, you know, just the density that's being asked for. Like the yellow portion of the site, you know, we've... Last time when I think we were looking at it was like 7.83 acres. Now it looks like it's more like 9.9 acres, correct?
We're disturbing 7.3 acres. The total area.
The total area that's shown in yellow is closer to the nine.
So the area that's going to contain residential components is the 9.9 acres?
Correct.
Right, and, you know, per our section 240-81.7, you know, that three units per acre is really a factor of that 9.9.
No, I think you're misunderstanding. It's 86 acres minus the gross lot area when you do a mixed use. We're not doing a subdivision. The applicant is Dakota Properties as the developer of it and Diamond Properties as the property owner.
So 240-81.7...
You take the gross lot...
States that then the area devoted to the residential component of the mixed use. So the residential component devoted is the yellow area of 9.9 acres, correct?
I don't think that's how it reads. I think you have, you take the total area and...
In my recollection, is you take, and that's been in the submission since November. We've gone over this a few times, is that you take the entire acreage, right? And then we backed out the acreage necessary of the 86 acres for the 209,000 square feet of retail that's out there. And then that left us with the amount of acreage that was left from a gross, from a net standpoint, taking out the wetlands and the floodplains and so forth.
I mean, that's not how I'm interpreting this section of the code related to mixed use.
If you interpret it that way, candidly, you wind up with no ability to do multifamily in your community whatsoever beyond what you already have. So if you look at your zoning code as a whole, there are only two zones in your entire town where multifamily is allowed, and it requires a special permit. So I think you run right into Fair Housing violation right off the gate if you interpret the code that way. I think there's no way.
I mean, that is how the code...
So the section 240-81.7A1. So this section only applies to mixed uses. It doesn't apply to multifamily history.
But you transpose and take the same formula of net lot area from the RMF III and the RMF V.
But this doesn't...
I gotta pull it out.
Right, so, but, so here, and this is something that we can... So it says the residential, so the text exactly says, "Residential density in a mixed-use development shall not exceed three dwelling units per acre of net lot area devoted to the residential component of the mixed use." So...
So I'm interpreting the residential component of the mixed use as being the yellow zone on that map.
So that's even less than...
Not commercial parking, you know, not, you know, BJ's parking lot, you know, not, you know, the area of the site off to the side, like just the portion that's being utilized. And I'm not disagreeing with you that it creates a lack of dense housing, like, but, you know, like this...
So how would that work then on a mixed use? So let's just say for the sake of argument, the AC Moore is 102,000 square feet, and we podiumed over it. There's no way to do a podium product, period, under that math. Because how do you do the math when you have residential over retail then?
That is a question I asked, and no one was able to answer.
So fortunately, we don't have that.
I mean, we tried that. We tried to do that, right, with the town board with text amendments?
I think the answer is that it goes through the town board.
So I guess there's another issue here, which is to be, that says, "Minimum residential and commercial components, as measured by net lot area, the mixed use shall be at least 25% residential and at least 25% commercial." So do we know what the net lot area is?
Yes, it's 40, it's in my original...
Right, from the amendment. It's 43 acres. 43 acres, net?
So if this is 9.9, then it doesn't meet the 25%. So that would be the additional variance.
So it sounds potentially like we need, since none of us in this room, well, there's only one of us in this room, so I don't... Yeah, there's only one of us in this room who'll have to interpret the zoning code.
Right.
Only one of us.
So I think that may be where we need to go. And then should that person... So, you know, then if you're unhappy with her determination, you can certainly...
Seek more variances.
You can build that into this as an interpretation and a variance together. There's nothing that prohibits that.
Right, because if you didn't go that, if you made that interpretation and didn't give that hardship relief, it becomes even more problematic for the ability to ever develop multifamily in your community, which then becomes even more of a Fair Housing violation.
So I will put for the record, because this has been discussed, particularly at the town board. This mixed-use provision, as it's written, for residential over commercial is very problematic. But fortunately, here, we don't have that issue. So...
What do you mean by problematic? Like, in what way? In that our code is not alone? In that our code's not addressing it in any way? Is that what you mean by problematic?
Well, I mean, it doesn't, so the issue becomes if I have, particularly with respect to B, not so much with respect to A. So let's say I have a building that's 10,000 square feet retail on the first floor, 10,000 square feet apartments on the second floor. I don't know how this code would operate for purposes of the density. Because for purposes of B, you know, we're talking about net lot... We're not talking about square footage. We're talking about net lot area. So if I've got a net lot area that has two, twice the square footage on at different heights, you know, the three dwelling units per acre doesn't work well necessarily with square foot... I mean, I guess you could convert it to square footage.
It just starts getting even more absurd as I'm looking at this, because let's just play it out a different way. The SC zone applies to three properties in the entirety of the town. This is the biggest of the three. If you just do straight commercial, we're allowed 1.134 million square feet of commercial out there, which obviously there's no market for. I mean, you can't even fill what we have. You have a piece of property that went from being worth $20 million to last tax settlement, I think, was around 12. And we're circling the drain going lower, especially BJ's needs here. So to interpret the code the way you started interpreting it, so not only now am I, I'm at even less of, it's supposed to be mixed use, it's supposed to be allowed by special permit. And I can't get 1.1 million square feet of leasable area out there with, for... I can only get it for purely commercial. I can't get it for a mixed use of commercial and residential because you use a different formula. You kick me to the formula for multifamily, which means instead of using gross lot area, I have to use net lot area, which is when I do my commercial calculation, my FAR, I don't have to deduct wetlands. I don't have to deduct floodplains. But now, when I want to do residential in a mixed use on the most heavily trafficked segment of your town on Route 9, where there already are three traffic lights within two miles and there's water and sewer available, I have to use a more restrictive definition, right? Meanwhile, just to be very clear, you have 13,400 acres in your town's own residential and only 340 zoned that allow multifamily. So this is like an attempt to actually allow some amount of multifamily in your town. And if you look at the overlay of those 340 acres in your town, it's pretty much 100% built out for multifamily. And the ones that haven't, it's because they're not on sewer and water, so you obviously can't get the density. So like, you're basically going into, like, well, you're from New Jersey. It's like not Laurel, right? You're just going straight headlong into the notion of you can't do multifamily. It's not allowed in your town. No new multifamily is basically, if you interpret your code in such a restricted fashion, that we can't even on a gray field of a dead shopping center, put multifamily on it. You know, 27 multifamily units? There's no...
Well, I mean, I think there's a path. The path is what you guys were previously doing. You go through the town board.
We got denied.
Is that accurate? That's not accurate.
Yeah, watch the videos. It's pretty clear. Three people, and when you can't get a public hearing, it's tantamount to a denial. If you can't schedule a public hearing on a local law that was introduced, and it was introduced after a year's worth of work, then you can't go forward if you can't get a public hearing. So there is no alternative. You are the board of last resort. After this, is your code an impediment to Fair Housing? There's nothing left.
So to that point, in fairness to the ZBA, the ZBA are golfers, and they play the ball where it lies. Okay, so they don't write the code. They didn't...
I'm not, I'm not, I wasn't trying to go at you. I was just trying to go through the logic.
I know, so, and I think that's a, that's in some respects...
I told you how I feel about it, right? Dear friend, I think we're done here tonight. I think we're done.
Public discussion.
We will be putting this off until Peter is here.
So...
I don't think that's a good idea. I think we should all come back to the table. Because no one's pushed, no one's pushed for you to do anything.
How dare you talk that way about us? How dare you? How dare you?
Chairman, I think your attorney was defending you for me attacking you.
I think maybe if there's a question, we should go to executive session to...
Yes.
Discuss next steps on this?
Negative. I'm done.
So we don't go to, we'll have to do it another time.
Well, you still have a forum of the board here. I don't think this is good optically for us either. It doesn't leave us a lot of moves, folks.
If the board wants to go make a motion, go into executive session?
I would make a motion to go into executive session.
Those in favor?
No.
Yes.
You're not leaving us a lot of room, Acting Chair? You're pushing us in a direction, Acting Chair.
Do you vote to go into executive session?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion. I'll make a vote that we vote over.
Okay. Executive session, okay. So vote carries. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Just for the record, Mr. Lawrence Zini has left, so there's still this call.
Thank you.
Jim, where are we going? Supervise the conference.